My handle is perfect. For husband and children of the world to ask.
Yes. Six thirty, one hundred and five thirty. Five thirty start.
Five thirty.
I just got sixteen seconds.
I'm also going to attend. It used to be five thirty-five today.
Five thirty, thirty dollars. The annual meeting makes that one five thirty-five, the rest of them make five hundred. So it's all five thirty. Okay. The crazy computer is wrong. So you don't want to just leave it. Play caution of the wind, start ten seconds. I show us points if it's also.
Yeah, I shut it over now.
Good evening, everyone. Call the meeting to order. We have any public comments? You need comments this morning, this evening? Having no comments, so we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on September twenty first.
So.
Motion by Ty Bay, seconded by Jeff. All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Posed, heard none. Move on to reports. Obviously, Beth is not here tonight. So I'm filling in for her. We have a couple of things. First off, anybody who's still interested in attending the NYCT dinner, please get ahold of Marie before the end of the close of business today and make reservations.
Event is the third, Friday the third.
Yep, at the casino, in Saratoga Casino.
It's how we've covered last year and then next year.
I have this question. We have a representative from our board to NYCT. Am I right?
Yes, that would be Jeff.
Jeff.
Jeff was the representative, but Jeff is leaving the board, so we're gonna have to appoint another representative.
Yeah.
So.
Meaning that person is gonna go and listen to the lecture where they're gonna come and explain to us what is going on. Am I right?
Yeah.
That's the ideal situation.
Yeah.
Yes.
And they also, there are orderly meetings at NYCT that they send out information on that the representative can attend as well. I know Jeff kept this informed on what was going on, so we'll get a minute soon on that aspect.
So if there are board members who are interested, Terry could have more. Our acting chair would be happy to contain that.
Sure, I could talk to them at the next meeting, at the event, actually. So if you're interested, let me know.
Thank you.
You're always looking at the last minute, just as well.
That's for the year.
Okay, so we, it's a sad day today. It's sad and happy. First off, I'd like to welcome Grant Preston to the board from Boone County. And as you know, Jeff Wilson started this last month. And we have a couple people leaving. First and foremost, Jeff Peck will be leaving us. We have a resolution by the board. Jeff Peck has devoted eight years of dedicated service, trustee, student, faculty and staff. And Jeff Peck has served Montgomery Community College with the highest distinction as a trustee, has dedicated many hours of counseling and expertise to many college committees. And Jeff Peck has exemplified the highest integrity and principles in his relationship with trustees, student, faculty and staff. And whereas Jeff Peck has demonstrated leadership, working with trustees, student, faculty and staff, now therefore be known by the board trustees from Montgomery Community College as hereby commends Jeff Peck's outstanding service and thanks him for his valuable contributions this nineteenth day of October of the year of twenty twenty-three. And signed by our Chair Beth Nishium of McGee, Montgomery Community College trustee. Jeff, if you would, please come up.
So thank you. It's been an honor to serve on this board. I was interested in doing this. I attended here. I know about the campus. I've watched it overall. I've watched the F's and R's. And I was lucky enough to be here through a very interesting time in the college's history. So I had the pleasure of reading the search to a president. And who bumped up that is right under our post, so I'm glad we have right here. We made it through COVID all this together and worked our way through. What a great team here at both the administration. What the faculty did, switching to to online education and the dedication that they showed to our students to get through that is just tremendous. And just the resiliency of your organization. And finally, the trustees, it's all been a pleasure to serve with. Since we've had a famously collaborative group, all interested in one thing, our students and the college itself. Ego gets left at the door and the business gets done. And it's always for the right reasons. And for that, I can't say that about every organization that I've ever served in. So it's been an absolute pleasure and I'm sorry they're throwing me out.
Thank you.
And we have a second person that will be leaving us. Roberta.
Oh, surprise.
We have a resolution here from Roberta Wensman. Roberta Wensman has devoted three years of dedicated service to trustee, student, faculty and staff. And as I said, has served Montgomery Community College with the highest distinction as a trustee and has dedicated many hours of counseling and expertise. And Roberta Wensman has amplified the highest integrity and principles in the relationship of trustees, student, faculty and staff. Whereas Roberta Wensman has demonstrated leadership in working with trustees, student, faculty and staff. And now therefore be it by the board of trustees, Montgomery Community College as hereby commends Roberta Wensman for her outstanding service and thanks her for her valuable contributions this nineteenth day of October, the year of twenty twenty-three, and assigned by the board chairman, Beth Nishium of McGee. Roberta?
Pleasure. I can't follow all of these amazing habits that came before me, but I echo everything that was said. It's just been an amazing group. I also came here and graduated from here and just thank so much of the college campus and everyone here. So continue doing what you're doing. It's amazing. Thank you.
And let me just say, hopefully we get to rip that up, because Roberta has been submitted as a governor's appointee. However, the governor's office is currently six or seven years behind. Jim, Ty Bay, all of our governor's appointees, our terms have expired and there is a backlog of.
There's a hundred and twenty appointments they have to do.
Yeah, I mean.
They're trying to.
Your choice, choice to leave us.
Well, her seat was filled. Her term expired. She's a county appointee. Her term expired.
She helped. She filled the vacancy.
Her name has been submitted as a governor's.
Yay.
However, that hasn't.
They could go away easily, so.
We don't want you to go away.
We appreciate this.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And now for some bad news. We were supposed to have a mini-retreat after this meeting and discuss the board evaluation. But in discussing the matter with the president, a lot of people have moved on and changed in the last year with COVID and everything else. We decided to maybe hold off on doing the evaluation. So there will be no mini-retreat tonight. I'm sorry. I really wanted to keep you seated until nine, ten o'clock tonight, but.
My fault.
You know, so that concludes my report. Mr. President, your report.
There.
Probably just write a number of background things over them.
There you go. Sorry, usually I'm.
You've got lost two points.
It's like a game show.
A Russian judge tonight. Now my mouse disappeared. So we won't record this. We'll just move on. So acting chair has frequently complained when you get these positions filled, so I, I want you to know, I haven't spoiled your complete control of the report, but I do want to give you an update on where John with a number of these states is. Because Chastity and her team have made tremendous strides and we have pulled a number of slots. Our coordinator of accessibility services position, they've been filled and they started. Our senior HR administrator has started. Our diversity custodian position started. Our associate Dean of Student Success Protection and Opportunity Program begins on the end of this month. Just today, we made an offer that was accepted for our outreach and program, the Gator Specialist. She will start in early November and our two principal clerk positions have yet to open in the comments. One starts next week. The other starts in early November. So we have some new positions that we'll talk about in a minute. But we are getting close to having the chairs around the table filled. So we're very excited about that. It seems, you know, it seems like we've got a good team and good energy and new perspectives on things. I did, for those of you who received the weekly report and some of the new trustees will get added to that. You did hear this from me already, but I just wanted to talk a little bit about Title III grant that we had applied for in the federal government. We were awarded that and that is about $2.2 million over the next five years. Two overall project goals associated with this. This is the second time that this institution has been awarded this grant. The last time was in nineteen ninety-nine. By term. So they are nice grants to have. They provide us with a great deal of flexibility and allow us to enhance what we do. And so there are, as I said, two major goals, one of which is directly focused around student achievement and success. The second, which is around our data collection, our data analysis capacity. Fun fact, for those trivia fans out there, I was actually hired under the first Title III grant as the first full-time director of institutional research. And twenty-three years later, we're going out and doing the same thing. Going to hire a full-time director of institutional research under Title III. Hopefully they're better than I was. So we, you know, just received that word about a month ago and we are kicking off those activities. Hopefully we'll have the IR position posted by the end of this week or early next week and we'll get that position filled. So here are just some of the key outcomes that we hope to achieve with this, you know, obviously focused on improving our retention because especially in times where enrollment isn't as strong as you'd like it to be. Just like any business where if you can hold on to an employee or a student, it's much less expensive and much better than going out and finding a new one. So we're going to look at how we can improve our retention. And as part of that, we'll be hiring a new full-time retention four-year or five-year associate dean that's coming up or either. So we're also going to be looking at improving our graduation rates. And just for the record, we have excellent graduation rates for two-year college. We are the best in the capital district, returning our graduation rate, which is around thirty-five percent. And that sounds really low and startling to you until you realize that, you know, for the back of the warrior, it tends to be fifty percent. And, you know, many of our students come here without the attention of graduating. So for us to achieve what we do achieve, that's a great accomplishment for us, but we still want to drive that higher. And I'm just gonna say, and particularly with the focus on those populations that are pale-eligible or historically underrepresented. So they, they, those two populations tend to have lower graduation attainment rates. We want to make sure that we're focusing on them and helping them across the finish line. So these are students who are economically disadvantaged and also are historically underrepresented populations. And again, we want to look at how do we improve the student experience as well for those students that we are serving. And we want to look at, as we, as part of our strategic enrollment efforts, as we reach out to different populations like the adult learners, we want to increase the number of opportunities that they have for flexible scheduling. So the high flex model is one where we may have on campus course that you have the option of attending through the internet. Or, you know, you're only able to come once a week and do that and do the rest. And then other options around that. And then, again, we want to increase the utilization of data for decision-making and, as I said before, improve our overall institutional research capacity. So those are our priorities. Jeff, you have some other such question?
Are the two tech students who are going to graduate with this?
No.
Okay.
No, because the definition, it's a cohort-based definition that starts for kind of full-time students. So if you happen to come as a casual learner, part-time, you also are.
Tricked, you're.
That's correct. Yeah. So it's the traditional federal definition that we're benchmarked on, which is first type full-time. Trickery.
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
When you compare our percent time with other colleges, where we stand, on the lower side, in the middle or higher?
For graduation rate?
Yes.
We're number one in the capital district.
Yep.
So we, you're us.
But it's.
Amongst community.
Yes.
We don't compare us to an RPI.
No, no, no. On the long card.
But yeah, amongst our region, we're number one.
I think throughout the nation too, we're pretty high.
We are. You know, the average two-year college graduation rate is nineteen, just under twenty percent. So we far exceed that and have for, you know, a number of years. It's something we are proud of.
Yes.
And, you know, given one of them to bolster those numbers as we look at some of the populations that are struggling to reach that attainment level. So.
Take it all into data showing how many of our students that we here reach graduation someplace else.
Yes. And in fact, our new associate dean for role advantage has been taking a dive into that data. So we have access to the National Student Clearinghouse, which was about a few months ago, as they had a data breach. But yes, we have access to that data. And in fact, when we report on some of our other federal grants, I'm sure, you know, for example, that is, that is data that they're interested in. So we can follow those students to the institutions that they have drawn to after us.
I think that would be, those would be interesting numbers to share with sponsors too. Because I think we've done it in the past.
Yeah, we have done it in the past.
It's not all about just who graduates here. It's part of our mission is lifting students, whether they finish here or not. So.
We are, we are engaging right now in another compact study that includes some of those metrics and we will be sharing that with the sponsors as well as our state representatives.
Will the new implementists be able to work on some of them?
It will be done by the time you're hired. We actually contacted with an outside consultant.
Thank you.
You can't read this. I don't expect you to read this. This is the logic model of what we're dealing with Title III. It does list out the positions that we're looking to hire with Title III. So as I mentioned, we're gonna have a coordinator of retention and success. We're gonna have a career planning specialist, because again, we're focusing on adult learners. We're focusing on outcomes as well. We are going to have the director of IT. We are gonna, we were able to offset one of our existing employee salaries to some of this grant as well as one of those things, not federal government. Right? So we get them now. Depending on the source, sometimes they get really itchy about if you supply your existing funds. This grant isn't so worried about that. So that's a nice thing. We are also, you know, we have some other pieces to this. You know, we have the ability with this grant to purchase some additional software programs to support some of these things. And so we'll be, you know, we'll be enjoying this grant for the next five years. So congratulations to the team that worked hard on this. Again, we have to give credit to our shared grant writer that we hired a couple of years ago, Viva Radak. She's been, you know, she's nearly batting a thousand on the big grants that she's gone out and applied on our behalf. And we have a strong team internally to help serve with those things there. So.
Are there any outcome deliverables that are associated with that?
There are benchmarks. There's an external, yeah, as part of this, we have done an external evaluation to make sure that, you know, if we said we were gonna increase our graduation rate by, you know, X amount, that's part of our reporting process. And if you don't meet those metrics, you need to provide a good explanation of why you didn't. But, you know, we have experienced this grant before. There isn't typically a clawback. And oh, he's Mr. Mark, so we're gonna take that money back. So, you know, again, this is a good, good program for you to help them. And if I'm, I believe I'm correct, only two senior colleges received funding in this round. It'd be really cool if colleges, the other one, the chancellor's office is putting out a testament reason because, of course, you know, it wants to say anything. So they've had the chance to say nice things about it. So. All right. So that is, those are the highlights of what I wanted to discuss tonight, but I'm happy to answer your questions you may have about that. Any other questions? I do have one, I live on a final comment I want to make, and that is to publicly thank Montgomery County. They were here this last week filling in the pop holes on the parking lots. They do that. We provide material, they provide their equipment and labor for that. They've done that every year. For the last, I don't know how many years, certainly the last four or five years, we really. Most particularly, we hope that this will help get us over to next year. We're gonna start phase one of the payable, repiable projects. So we just want to make sure that the trustees are aware and we'll thank Eric and the crew from Montgomery County for helping us with that.
Well done. Thank you, Mr. President. Move on to knowledge assembly report.
That is written or attached to your packet. So we had our first meeting this month with the new chair government. A lot of energy, excitement around that. We'll see how it goes.
Great. Thank you. The college student trustee report is not available tonight. We have a new student trustee, but she's not, she's not available. So hold on to the foundation stream for it with trustee Dasi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome the new member of this board. You're gonna enjoy being on this board and we're looking to work with you. And I wanted to thank Jeff and Roberta for their job well done. We are really, I'm not looking forward to losing you guys. I hope you come back to us because you both are very valuable. And Jeff, you really helped us through a very difficult time and we appreciate that. Now my, the first, the first thing on my agenda is the fifth Friday series, which held on September twenty ninth. Fifty people, they were attended and it was a very good meeting and the topic was about the social media impact on everyday life. And the speaker, we have two speakers, one Patrick Cruz, Coalition Coordinator for Four Rivers Alliance of Hamilton County, as well as one student from Glover'sville High School and his name was Jackson Fitzpatrick. It was very informative and there was so much good feedback from the audience. The next Friday, fifth Friday series is gonna be on March twenty ninth, twenty twenty-four. Please mark your calendar for that. Second item on my report is the annual distinguished alumni and third clock tower award dinner, which is gonna be on November second at the Holiday Inn in Johnstown. Please, I know you guys are very busy, but if you forget, please send your reservation to the foundation and we are looking forward to have everybody all together over there. We have two alumni, distinguished alumni. And for, you know, one of them is Joseph Semuan, Simeon, Simeon, sorry, yes, Simeon. Graduated nineteen eighty-one. And the other one is Kayla Henry P.A., graduated two thousand and seven. And the annual club tower will be given to Venmore Asset Management, which is in Copley Square. And the deadline for the, you know, reservation is October twenty seventh. You can get in touch with Maria, Ms. Maria Cambasco in foundation office, and she's, as always, very helpful. Next item is Prella Gallery will display the artwork of Joe Erlich. This gentleman has the background of advertising, marketing, as well as environmental science. And he, what he does, or you can see in his artwork, is gonna be in sometime in November. The date is not clear yet, but we will notify from the foundation when. This gentleman would, what he create a very simple design, like a logo type and infuse or all the humanity that are involved with, what kind of problem, struggle or power, conviction, error, faith, all those things in their, in his painting. And he's working in different media. One of them is in our packet, which is very interesting. I encourage everybody, when it's open, go and see that. The next item is annual appeal will be made at the end of November. And this year, annual appeal will be support a fundraising effort for the multipurpose turn athletic field. And I'm asking, on behalf of foundation, I'm asking all of our trustee, join the foundation member. If you know anybody that they would like to support the college, I give the foundation, Mrs. Lancy, the name and the number, and possibly you can even help them to make it easy how much they can ask them to help or support. And that would be wonderful. And that would be wonderful. And this is for capital project. And again, it's going to be for multipurpose church athletic field. Next item, a foundation anticipate, if you remember, we sent something for Senator Gillibrand, and he sent it regarding this field. And she sent it to Senate Appropriation Committee for multipurpose athletic field. And we are anticipating to hear from that committee any day. Last but not least, there are so many ways that we, as a trustee, we can help foundation to achieve their goal. And one of them is, the simple one is purchasing a seat in a theater. Each seat is $350. You can buy one, you can buy the whole road, you can buy two, as you wish. The other way is the annual appeal, which is you can, or a scholarship, it can be endowed or passed through. Golf tournaments, you can be sponsored or register as a player. And these are, these fundraising, again, is for multipurpose church athletic field as well as cybersecurity lab. I don't know, Mrs. Lancy, do you have anything to add?
The only thing is about, we are under the process of getting an appraisal. We should have it tomorrow on the land that the college, the foundation owns, the 155 acres over here. And we'll maybe move forward with offering it for sale. So that's what we're asking for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Gazi.
Anything else?
Any other questions for trustee Gazi? If not, thank you, trustee Gazi.
Thank you, Mr. Jeff.
We'll move on to committee reports. Final, final, it's committee report by trustee Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The expense graphs are included in your packet. There's two graphs included, one that provides expense and budget data by major function, and another that provides expense and budget data by contracted services category. The graphs compare fiscal year 2022, '23 to '23, '24. The expense summary budget versus actual for the period of 9/1/23 to 9/30/23, which is 8% of our fiscal year. To date, actual expenses and encumbrances are 9% of budget. Expense detail by department provides by department a detailed comparison of expenses and encumbrances to budget for the period 9/1/23 to 9/30/23 as well. Again, 8% of our fiscal year. The finance statement for the period of 9/1/22 through 8/31/23, which is 100% of our fiscal year. The revenue includes billing activity through 7/31/23 for the fall '22, winter '23, spring '23, and summer '23 semesters. This represents 104.7% of our tuition budget. Blood expenses incurred represent 12 months or 90.3% of the budget. The figures are preliminary and unaudited. The financial year-end activities are still ongoing. There's no budget transfers to report this month. The contract report and grant report are included in the packet. The college's external auditors are scheduled to begin their fieldwork for the annual audit the week of October 16th. So we're in it. And there's no questions that conclude.
Have any questions for trustee Wilson? Yeah, thank you, trustee Wilson. Well, we'll move on to the second rounds with trustee Landria.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We only have a couple of things to point out. Stair treads replacement did arrive on campus and scheduled to be installed during the winter break, so won't disrupt that in classes. 2024 capital projects, Scott has reached out to the dormitory authority to see what sign destruction management service could be provided. In particular, the relocation of the electrical service fire alarm from the basement of the welcome center to the first floor of the welcome center. Also, as the president's pointed out, the county has helped us fill several potholes in repairs in the parking lot. We are eternally grateful for that. Because as you know, our laptop area is a mess. So with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Landria. Do we have any questions for trustee Landria?
I have a question. When they do, like, put on Montgomery or Montgomery County, they do something, are we sending a thank you note to them or not?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Landria. We'll move on to trustee Peck.
Hey, thank you. The academic division has been very busy. Scott's kind of running with his team here. Very good. Some of the things to go over in social sciences, the HUS 212 students were participating in a red flag campaign here on campus. And they coordinated that with Catholic charities to raise awareness for the needs of possible relationship problems, folks, either on the campus or off. Great idea. In business, Alex Henderson and her team have 20 active students in the Wall Street Club who will be going to New York on a field trip on November 11th. I'm sorry, November 3rd. Also, having a conversation with the players, and learned that this is probably the most active Wall Street club in the state. So a lot of that driven by the new BAM lab that we have here on campus and some really engaged students and some great faculty that are moving in. So that's really pretty exciting. Eight coaches are trained and 60 plus students have been coached, and over 110 students added to the Money Smart database. That's the financial literacy program that we saw profiled a couple of months ago. And Money Smart Training Conference coming up in Baltimore. I think that Larry's going to that, right?
Yeah, it's that.
Oh, that is okay. In nursing and grad tech, two new psychiatric mental health contracts that included to have sites for experience in the community. The Rob Constantine Recovery Center, which is run by the very formidable Rachel Bruckman, is one of the sites, and they will be giving students a chance to get activity there. And then the McCounting Center in Glover'sville will also be a clinical site for those students. In rad tech, the rad tech program received a Pixie 7200 Phantom with a human skeleton from Super Tech. It seems very fitting that a skeleton would be from Phantom. So there is, and the skeleton is a lightweight, maneuverable skeleton for students that are working in that rad tech program to manipulate their people and see what happens. The rad tech faculty, Carla Labat and Colin Bailey, top grade people, were recently featured in the American Society of Radiologic Technologists publication, the ASRT scanner, for accepting the 2023 ASRT award for advocacy in radiological science profession. And this is one of a long list that they've collected awards over the years in this program. Senior students held an orientation luncheon for the incoming freshmen at Saratoga State Park. And the Red Tech freshman class 2023, uniformed section and starting clinicals in October. And students love their new logo. Is that the SUNY FMCC logo? And then finally, in that division, I don't know, Tabitha Sabata, BES, RTV in 2014, delivered her bachelor's degree from SUNY Empire State. She will be the lead technologist at St. Mary's. She's also the vice president of the Diverge State Society for Rad Sciences. Alyssa Aluna, alumna, 2015 grad from Upstate Medical Center with her master's in PA. She is pastor PA, national certified examinations. And Mark Swain was noted as a guidance counselor and helped change her life by motivating careers after then. So most of us know Mark, and Mark is a pretty motivating guy, so we're lucky to have him here. And then current senior, Brock Bellinger, was featured with this national leadership class in the ASRT publication scanner. So FTT, FMCC is leading the scanner. In technology, Ari Waffle hosted a kickoff meeting or hackathon of the computer club and developed a plan for the year and set up a voting system for new members and started the reorganization for the upcoming. In workforce development, the authority assistant, associate dean, has been working with the pathways lab and hiring three peer tutors, mentors for the human and addiction services. Pathways lab is used for the newly revised Human Services Fund, as well as open lab hours for students to receive assistance with academics or navigating the various offices on campus. One peer tutor is bilingual, making services more accessible for diverse populations on campus. We are preparing three students to submit their application for the CASAT following the fall semester and spring. We will be anticipating another 10 trainees will be submitting to submit. Total that will bring the WHWET, I'm sorry, BHWET graduation rate to 24 trainees. That's the behavioral health and substance strain folks have gone through. With the anticipated hiring of the community outreach engagement specialists, they will be better able to track job placement for the graduates. In behavioral health, increased amounts of tuition assistance to trainees have gone from $3,000 to $5,000 to better reflect the tuition costs of these, as well as ensure that the trainees don't have to use the stipend for personal things like gas, transportation, their utilities. The VCP team presented to Rob Kurt, parents on the newly credited advanced pathway credit program. VCP team presented to HFM career tech students, teachers, and guidance counselors on the difference between advanced placement and college and high school credits. That's, the VCP team hosted SUNY opening and the College State goes for transfer information tables. It will set up several others, as well as employer visits. They will recruit a graduate sitting in October. And then finally, St. Rose Teacher Pipeline Partnership. The College of St. Rose will be offering a course, an hour of early childhood education lab this spring. They'll be offering a course, curriculum and instruction as part of every education course at St. Rose. It can be transferred back to FMCC as an education credit. So again, a great addition to the partnership that developed in St. Rose. Anything else to add to that, Scott?
No, that's silly.
Are you going to know the right questions?
Any questions? Thank you, trustee Peck, for your last report. And we'll move on to trustee Perry.
All right. As you know, the student affairs report, the floor report is in our packet, and I have some of the highlights. So fall 2023 enrollment is currently at 1,759 students, and that equates to 1,036.73 FTE for all of us that are first in the FTE COVID. So that is, we're behind last year's fall 2022 total by 39 students. So not too bad. Our admissions office is busy planning their fall open house, which will be scattering November 4th. There will be a breakfast, family-friendly breakfast offering available from during the open house from 9:30 to 12:00. The admissions staff hosted their annual college fair in conjunction with the tri-county counselors on September 27th. And they had 57 colleges, which was about 1,000 students attendance. That's great. They also have been recruiting to over 20 high schools and on the road with the college caravan to local college fairs, which generate, generated so far a total of 177 high school junior and senior employees. Our student engagement at the Commons and with the Student Opportunity Grant programs has seen an increase of nearly 8% in student participation compared to the same time last period, fall 2022. Coordinator for student involvement, Leanne Pratt, has been recruiting and training our new student senate association officers and club senators. Our new coordinator of accessibility, students' counseling, and alternative testing, Kathy Norman, has hit the ground running and is actively collaborating with the EOP and Trio and teaching faculty to assist our students who are seeking those services. Our retention team wants to thank the faculty for participating in the early warning system, which identified students who we need to reach in the first part of the term to keep them on track. For the second semester in a row, we've had 100% full-time faculty response rates. So that's very, very, something to be very proud of for a faculty. The Evans Library has been partnering with the nursing facility faculty with information literacy sessions. The C-Step program also collaborated with the business faculty, Lawrence Stuckerman, to discuss the Money Smart program. As a result, 40% of the students in attendance signed up for personal finance courses. So that's great. Both staff and C-Step have hosted events for their students, including field trips and after-school activities. The C-Step Advisory Board Dinner Meeting was held on October 17th. And finally, the LPP Liberty Partnership Program is busy connecting with students at the Wilbur Lynch Middle School, as well as Amstrom High School. On the 29th of September, the LPP staff hosted a recruitment event for the middle school, reaching more than 150 students with sips of cider, donuts, apple cider, a gift bag of nutritional items, and the LPP program applications, as well as information for future events, which includes National Hispanic Heritage Month events. And as I said, you can see the floor report in your packet, and we appreciate Arlene for her great highlights. Thank you to both Jeff and Roberta for their time. As, still feeling like a new board member as I came in during COVID. It was, even though I was on the screen for a great while, I was, I learned a lot from your leadership on the board and my time spent with you. So thank you.
Thank you, trustee Perry. Are there any questions? If not, we move on to President Black. As I say right this morning, it was labeled.
They don't really go as smart. All right. One thing that is not on here that I'm going to start with basically is, you know, about the terrorist attacks by Hamas in Israel and the ongoing war that started. So we should put it together with the help of Monroe Community College. We should really put together a very nice statement about we can go for help of both our employees and students. And also reaffirm the fact that we would like to follow disability guidelines, diversity, equity, and inclusion guidelines too. So I appreciate Greg and Arlene's assistance and the assistance of all CDOs, chief diversity officers in doing this, because a lot going on throughout the state with this. Let's see. Oh, yeah, I think the peace clubs have been pretty active. We did an international day of peace, making peace crates, which would interest students to try and engage them in understanding what the concept is and how you practice it. We also did an interesting day of nonviolence, which was October 3rd. And I believe they sent out a statement, they sent it out to employees and also to people in the classes that I teach. And included, I, pretty sure I had it on nonviolent communication, as you've heard from me before. I gotta tell you, I really incorporated it well in the trustee and the human rights class at this point. And what it actually does is get people to listen, find common ground, express what their needs are, and request that they've been met, and it is working nicely. I think I finally got this figured out. So that's a positive thing, and I think that all of us in this world could use that a bit more at this point. Let's see. All right. I'm purple and orange today because it was bullying prevention day yesterday. So I was way more orange. And next year, we're all going to eat carrots from two weeks before and see if we can turn ourselves a little bit more orange. The best thing to do. But again, the bullying, take it on a global perspective, take it on the individual perspective, how we treat each other, how we conduct ourselves with each other. And, you know, bullying is rewarded in our culture in a lot of different ways. So it takes some time to help people identify it. And there's something called now, you've heard of fusion of responsibility to bystander effect? Well, now we're working on the upstander effect, which is a good way to go. This has started a while back where what you do is when you see someone being inappropriate, you start to change your culture. So you start to stand up. you start to change your culture, so you start to stand up for that person. And if you get people standing up, what it does, it changes the norm, um, which is important. And you know, it's not to play competitively on the athletic field, but it's just bullying pushing each other out, whether it be in the schoolyard or sort of a white collar for you that goes on in some workplaces too. So domestic violence awareness, awareness today was today. And um, school's doing a nice job on um, getting awareness out about that one. Raising awareness and giving avenues to pursue, to um, intervene in those types of situations. Spanish, today I inherited the month. Again, I offer glad this extra credit, here's six people identified who they are. Or pick one person and tell us who they are, just to try and raise that voice. I really feel the need to learn Spanish. And I would love to see, have to do this, I watched a Spanish soccer game the other night, it wasn't working. But that's just like, I'm surprised, what else? Uh, other than that, I have a um, list of dates. Other than that, any questions?
Have any questions? If not, thank you, Jeff.
Well, thank you.
And we'll move on to a good nation with Director Lloyd.
Sure. Our middle states groups, working groups are busy uh, actively collecting the documentation and needed self-study. We have a team that's going to the annual conference in December. And uh, then we'll continue working on self-study and at some point we'll be, you know, pouring some trust fees in. So if you have a particular interest in working with one of our working groups on the self-study, please let me know and we'll be plugged in. Uh, that's fine, I understand, but uh, certainly uh, once the site visit comes to fruition, there will be time when we can be with you and talk with you about it. And as we get the, the self-study for the belt, we may as important for a review.
Thank you, Dr. Lloyd. Any questions? If not, we'll uh, proceed with personnel, trustee Jezzich. We had several positions built. Kathy Norman, she starts September twenty-fifth as coordinator of accessibility counseling and alternative testing services for the past year. Kathy was an equal opportunity specialist, New York State Office of People with Development Disabilities. Previously, she served as director of accessibility services at Russell Sage for more than twenty-one years. Prior to that, Kathy has held administrative and faculty positions at Sienna, Hope County, Empire State College, and St. Mary's Hospital. So welcome Kathy. Uh, Norma, rundown, started on September twenty-fifth as the senior H R administrator for the past four years. Norma has worked at the Dollar General Distribution Center in Amsterdam. She started out as an H R journalist and moved up to senior H R manager. During that time, she provided H R support for more than five hundred employees. Prior to that, she had various H R support roles at S C O Family Services, O E C, Roethlisberger, Department of Education, and Trifecta Equity. So welcome Norma. Uh, we also had Garth Unger, started on September twenty-seventh as Buildings and Grounds. And uh, third shift, studying worker, past five years. Garth worked at Touch Source as a shipping coordinator and operations. Garth has health background in retail, technical, customer services, and I T troubleshooting. He retains associate's degree right here at F M C C, holds a bachelor's in SUNY Orianna. Well, Garth. Finally, Pamela McCall, will be starting on October thirtieth as Associate Dean of Retention, Student Success and Opportunity Programs. For the past seven years, Pamela was director of college and high school partnership, SUNY Schenectady Community College. In addition, she served as intern dean of academic affairs for the past year. Prior to that, she has held various positions at Skidmore College and Edwood College. We're still in search for um, two principal clerks in the library and commons, full-time, search in progress. Community outreach, outreach specialist, full-time, grant-funded, part-time security guards. And how are we making out with that?
Uh, you're on the interviews twice this week.
Okay. And um, we have Fall twenty twenty-four nursing faculty, full-time, search in progress. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Jazzy. Any questions? If not, we'll move on to policy with trustee Wilson.
I have nothing, uh, I gotta figure out and see what I gotta do here. We will definitely make sure that if there is something for you to report that you all have going on. Okay, this is the Wendy Perry memorial position for, it's taken, you'll record every month. As we, as we go through this self-study here, we will definitely be reviewing our policies. And so you guys have some activity, very good, I have future meetings.
Thank you. Do we have any other, other business to be brought forth?
Can I say something? Uh, I forgot to tell everybody, there is an envelope in front of you from Foundation. They make it easier for you to uh, respond and make reservation for uh, November second. But please do that.
Thank you, trustee. Thank you, trustee Gazi. If not, I want to take a motion to adjourn. Uh, vague by trustee Landria, second advice, trustee Gazi, almost in favor?
Aye.
Posed, bearing none motion, but adjourned. There is no executive session.
Thank you.